Well, I already get the consent agenda from the last meeting as well as the chat. Right place update, community building development team minutes from their last meeting. For our new business, as requested by council, I did contact the city attorney about the possibility and legality of charging different rates for the same permits. And bottom line is we can do it. We just have to be able to articulate why we're doing it. We have to have something objective and defensive. So, he threw out some ideas. He said maybe based on the size of the business. And I thought perhaps we would look at a new business, maybe for the first year through the help of G-1. But he said it would be extremely, he thought it'd be very difficult if you looked at saying the downtown is treated differently than how it is on the 405 area. So, the way I see it, we would have about three options. First, we just keep charging our same permits for every place. Second, establish the objective standards to decide which businesses are eligible to receive permits about fees. As I said, the city attorney suggested the size of the business might be one. I offered waiving fees for new business, perhaps for the first one or two years. Another thing I thought of is maybe there might be buildings or storefronts in an area, or just any area, that's been vacant for a number of years and maybe, you know, it's not a big incentive, but to say, hey, if we get a new business in there, we're not going to charge for those permit fees for a period of time. But those would be objective. And finally, you know, the last one is that we could displace fees, all fees for those things. Last year, we only collected $250 total for the sandwich store signs, Ugly Sports and Ugly TV. Those are the options for council to consider. The next is second reading of the ordinance 190, which is a rewrite of our planned unit development section. The next is ordinance 191, which is a second reading also, and this basically allows us to conform the state law in terms of building codes and enforcing the mold on part. And that was discussed at the last meeting. And then the next is the update by Friendis and Field. He had a request from Sean Hipart to move that to the end of the new business, because he has conflict with being able to get into that for eight. So, with the present council, if we can do that, maybe they just make that at the start of the meeting. Next is the discussion of the use agreement with the building development team. I left some information at council's seats that came from the city attorney, just some things that he thought could be discussed or considered by council. One of the things in section five and nine, it says that the city is committing that it will not charge fees for its reviews. Just trying to flesh that out to decide is that just going to be engineering, planning fees, or is that going to translate to PCI, or DEQ, or any other types of administrative reviews? So, probably I'll flesh that out as what he suggested. The other was, I had discussed with him, I said at one time, the community building development team was talking about an endowment fund. I didn't know if that was still in play, but that, you know, something to be discussed. Then he said, he suggested the council decide if the community building development team will need to post a performance bond while they're doing the project, which is normal for a construction project. And then the last thing is the exhibits need to be prepared in the council meeting. None of those have been done. So, those were his issues that he brought up. That's for council's consideration. Next is a proclamation from the governor.
Yes, just as an interest, I have a person that is willing to serve a vacancy on the park from rest. Would you want to have been nice to promote him to that, or people wait till next month?
I would say if you're ready now.
Yeah. This is Richard A. Matt. He's involved with the vision. He's more than happy.
Yeah, I was reminded by the park's director yesterday that we were hiring vacancy.
I've had reminders from the park.
Yep. Thank you. If that's agreeable, then we can do that. The next is the purchase of city property. Council remembers that last year, at the end of last year, Hanson Realty took over the ownership of the Wolverine Worldwide Building. And we made some changes to the original development agreement, and it was a second amendment to that agreement. And as part of that agreement, they had an option to purchase some city property that was described as a parcel of seed, a four acre parcel, immediately south of the, at the dirt access, the rattle access road back to wastewater treatment point. So, in talking with Victor Hanson, he wishes to purchase that four acre parcel plus an additional 2.4 acres that is contiguous to it, which I think is great. He's looking, you know, out into the future for expanding purposes. And I provided council with a map of where that 6.4 acre parcel is. And as a reminder, that's part of the city's former wastewater lagoon site. So, I discussed with the city assessor what we should value that on a periodic basis. It was a little difficult because there's not a lot of comparable sales for industrial property. So, he called Greenville, in their industrial park, they're selling their property for neighborhood of $8,000 to $10,000 an acre. However, that's got paved roads, curbs, it's got water and sewer right there, and it's not a brownfield, you know? So, it's, and, you know, when you're in a brownfield, that raises the cost of development. So, in talking with the assessor, we thought $2,500 was a fair price. That would be a total purchase price of $16,000, that's 2,500 per acre. And again, it's based on the general condition of the property, which is a brownfield, and so that increases the cost to improve it and construct it. There's no direct service for the utilities, and there's no main streets. So, I think we thought $2,500 is a fair price per acre. The other thing that factored into it somewhat is that would, if we go forward with our grant with EBA on trying to extend West Street south to 60 mile road, now we can say we have a piece of property purchased in that area that needs to be serviced. So, in my mind, it makes our grant look more favorable instead of saying we need this in case that property is developed. So, that would be my recommendation that council allows Hanson Realty to purchase that 6.4 acres of city property.
I have a clarifying question. So, I know that we have the airplane club out in that vicinity, and also the snowmobile rally. Now, is this that same piece of property, or this is a separate thing? Okay.
Yeah, this is to the east.
Okay.
This road right here.
Oh, I see. Okay.
There are a lot of property, city property.
Okay, very good.
That would be called Greenway. All right. It's called Inbornness. Headed to Paul Inbornness.
That kind of thing.
The next is an issue involving Trout Unlimited. I think at the last meeting or meeting before, home council, that they did not get the grant. They expected we'd submit a $3,000, give them letter of support, and allow us to make them do those projects on a property. So, at the request of the DEQ or the MDNR, I don't know which agency, they suggested strongly that Trout Unlimited resubmit the grant. It's going to not, the scope is going to change because it's going to be focused on North Park. So, they're asking for another letter of support and allow the project to go on city property, and that the city provide $2,000 towards the match. Now, we have budgeted in this fiscal year $3,000 for the match, so the money is available. So, nothing-
Just to clarify, not an additional $2,000?
Nope, it's, the $2,000 is included in this fiscal year budget, so we don't, we have it available.
They're only asking for two.
I thought it was two.
No, three. So, you know, I'm recommending that the council approve the request by Trout Unlimited. The next is a resolution that would allow the operation of golf carts on city streets in compliance with state law. Right now, you can do that, and it has to be done by resolution by the city council. So, Sergeant Kelly did a lot of investigation on this and determined that by resolution, the council can do that. So, this would allow, the way we have the resolution, our intent is that those events that have the community event designation of the council would be eligible for a resolution. And then, that would allow them to operate in the city in compliance with already spelled out state law. And then, it would be up to Sergeant Kelly and myself to develop a permit, and then establish the permit and hours of operations and things of that nature, and location of where they could be operated within the city. But this is the legal mechanisms that would allow them to operate, anybody to operate golf carts on city streets in accordance with state law. In the past-
I think I'm confused. Is the resolution an overarching thing for which we're creating a permit? Like, this would be the one time we-
Nope, no, it would come, it would come every time that someone wanted to use a golf cart-
Okay, then I'm confused why I need a permit?
Well, so we know what golf carts, we have some accounting of-
Got it. Okay.
Yeah.
I get it. I just was trying to understand if we're voting on a specific thing, why we all have to commit for this type of-
The resolution is, provides the framework for-
Got it.
-the city to authorize golf carts to operate in the city.
Okay.
And spelled out by state law, how they're done. In the past, when we had our own police department, the city just, I don't really want to say turned a blind eye to it, but made a conscious decision to accept, accept a certain increased liability risk by allowing them both to be operated on the city streets. And, you know, the chief of health officer, you know, we're not worried about that. The sheriff's department can't do that. So, that's why we were looking at the resolution. So, it was a way to make it work. So, I'm recommending that council approve that resolution. Also, this would only allow golf carts. No swabs, gear on, gears, nothing, nothing.
And it specifically designated golf carts?
Yes. And we-
Sort of that's what we're talking about.
Kind of problem. In the, in the past, the permits are nothing new. They're those permits off, issued by the police department in previous years. It's just a matter of tracking who, just so somebody doesn't just, you know, come in to use a golf cart. Or whatever it is.
And it has nothing to do with people in the parade, driving those kinds of golf carts or whatever?
That's a different thing.
I know, yes, I just want to make sure that-
That's another animal.
That's another set of permits? If I'm correct, very correct? Because you can drive out kind of strange things in the parade.
I am too diverse on that, because that's a pretty controlled environment.
Right, but I'm just saying, there is like, there's laws regarding grades.
Right. Grade laws?
There are.
Probably Sergeant Kelly.
Depending how hard the grade is at? You've got to like animal.
That's right. And the next is discussion on the strategic planning process, the funds were allocated in this year's budget for that, and checking with Linda. The city has used Dr. Lou Bender on two previous occasions to help with a strategic planning session.
I briefly remember him.
Yes. Dr. Bender is very well known, very well respected in terms of working with municipalities in strategic planning sessions and other areas. And I had the pleasure of participating in a number of seminars offered by that vendor. He does a series of week long workshops for police teams, clerks, treasurers, things of that nature, in this all time show. Talked to him, he's interested. If you're doing it, he gives two options. The first would be what he calls the council based format, two sessions, four hours each, held on separate days. And then, the other option would be a community based format, about three sessions, four hours each, held on three separate days. The first option would be $4,300, the second would be $500. Now, Dr. Bender said in his experience, it works best to start off, especially with a new council, with the council base, and then go into the community business. And I, you know, I would tend to agree with him. Now, that's not saying that the community can't, there's going to be opportunities of community input. What I'm proposing is that we hold this in the spring. We'll be pretty much wrapped up, plenty ways along into our master plan, update process, which could be very beneficial. It also provides an avenue for the community to get involved and provide input in that arena. So, that information may be of value to the council going forward. The other thing is, is that if we do it in March or April, that will coincide with our budget preparation. So, if there's some goals that are going to require money allocation, it's a perfect time. The second thing is, Dr. Bender's going to be in Florida for January and February, and to have him come back if possible a bit more. He said he would package it with other clients and spread it out. But I think for those reasons, I would suggest we go with the council based, two day program at $4,300 and do it in March or April and move forward.
Do you have specific dates?
No, no, no. And I don't want to get too far ahead of it, because council's still got to bang that handle and act on it. So, once we finalize that, that's when we talk to Dr. Bender, we can get a schedule. The next is adding a resolution to add Nelson College to the village of Sparta as members of the grand family that the council, and that's just a weird formality. The next is an agreement with Wolverine Sky Hots Model Club. It's a second amendment, we discussed that at last meeting. This will allow them to maintain the exclusive use of that property. And I think it's a win-win. They're happy with it.
So, we can pay taxes to ourselves?
Yes, they pay for us.
They're hovering.
Yes.
So, we don't have to pay taxes to ourselves? That is right, to ourselves.
The next is ordinance 192 to amend the subdivision ordinance. In talking with the city assessor, we really, we have a pretty tight ordinance on how to establish subdivision. But if we wanted to get into splitting lots, we were lacking. So, he suggested some language for, or some language that reviewed by the city attorney. The city attorney weighed in on it. So, basically, it outlines what would require for that, for the lots to be split, and it basically says, you've got to have direct access to a public roadway or private roadway constructed to the standards of the article, be serviced by public utilities necessary or required by law, informed in all particulars required to land a big man in all city ordinances, which would include minimum lot sizes. And it could be split into not more than four parts, and this would be done, it would be authorized by the council by the recommendation of state. So, he felt that was something we needed, and we concur, to recommend the council approve that. Next is Chamber of Commerce downtown trick or treating event on October 30th, that they look to the council to recognize as a community event, and obviously recommend approval of that request.
We have anyone to, we're going to be close to-
Nice motion, ma'am.
Okay, I'd say I-
Basically, it's the same as earlier, except the only addition for it is being, it's on Saturday, if you're coming down the road, then maybe sidewalk displays, other than that, it's the same trick or treating thing at night. But 4H, maybe setting up in the lot by fire burn.
I heard some discussion about closing the road or something like that. We were going to do that, we just have to have some-
The only thing we would do with that, that normally do is if you're taking barrels down the center lane, you had to help sort out traffic. Because, again, with the Kent County, this is the local thing, we can't have civilians stopping traffic to let civilians cross. You've got to be-
Sure, because I just, my question was, can we have some answers about it? Can we facilitate it? Make it happen?
The next is a motion to approve ordinance 93, which is movement of chapter 24 of the city code ordinances, specifically dealing with peddlers and solicitors and hands in margins. This came up as a suggestion by Sergeant Kelly. He looked, he's had some issues with solicitors. And as written, we don't have a very good mechanism to determine when or how a permit application could be denied, and also, if a permit was authorized and licensed issue, how it could be revoked. And so, he worked on some ideas, and then with a city attorney, and they, they worked that out, and Jason and I reviewed it, and that's the work product attached. It gives them, gives the city sufficient flexibility to make sure we can deny a permit if it needs to be denied, and how to revoke lots.
Is there anything on fraudulent theft? Like, there was a company, I don't know the name of it, and I had a problem as well, where they were selling meat off the truck. And they would say, like, not me. They would say, you'd be like, no, thank you, I don't want this. Well, I'll come back tomorrow. Okay. No. And he would just, he would not do that.
Ask him this anymore. Is that matter?
Okay. And then, I read on a community Facebook page, other people having helped me, wow, I mean, I won't name the company, but it was named. And apparently, this company has fraudulent mixed practices in another state, and, like, is this the way that, I don't know?
It gives us more, gives us more authority to deal with. One of the things is, is that it's difficult if someone's coming in from out of state to do a criminal history check. This is one of the things that requires, if they have to bring it in, they have to bring one in for us to do.
Yeah, this looks like through the Better Business Bureau complaint, is the way it's posted?
This may not, I'm sorry.
Okay.
This is, that will pop up in the back. Better Business Bureau, this convention is going on. But it gives us, puts us in a much better position to regulate what's going on. You know, we're talking about hours, if they can solicit and go door to door, and things like that.
And it's just in general, like, if people have complaints, they're going to get your permit revoked, is that a possibility?
The complaint is, is one of the specific complaints. There's a, there's a handful in there, it's refusing to leave, solicitors, most of the time, and it was, because that's quite a few of them, you know, outside the hours.
Yeah, then you can do your phone.
Okay.
We wanted to take the gray area of a late removal application. So, if it doesn't follow them, we would try to make it follow.
It's horrible. I mean, it's happened, it's horrible. But thank you.
If you're doing it a lot in the summer, you're going to connect, you're only getting a couple of hours.
Okay.
And that's a lot of time.
I always say unless you are under, if you are under 18 and you have something to end in group or club, I'm in. Everybody else go away. I don't like people, I don't want water, I don't want baths, I don't want to be off the truck. Get off, get out, obey.
The next is, issue is a library motion that the board made to, they'd like the city consider to propose conceptually to the city of Cedar Springs, the library board will build a new library building and turn over to the city of Cedar Springs, who will then own it. The library board will then lease the building. That's about all the information I have. I mean, everything was presented to us, so hopefully, there's going to be somebody from the library board that will elaborate on that. The next is also connected with the library board, another motion made by their board, the lot that reads, "The library board will work with the city of Cedar Springs to establish a new planned unit development and/or work with an existing planned unit development for the property on which the new library may be built." And again, I don't have a lot of extra information on that, and hopefully, we'll be able to get more. Next was an addition request by council of Conley on being the communications rep for the council.
Lots of you have asked me about this. I'm willing to do it, I just need you to authorize that you want me to do it. I speak when the mayor asks me to speak. Beyond that, I've been asked to use my communication skills to put a thing in the paper once a month about wonderful things that are happening here, like our fabulous police, then the Royal Playhouse Festival, and our Chamber of Commerce spectacular, and run fair, and I'm happy to do that, but I want an actual, like, blessing authority of council to do that. So, I'm not just speaking me.
My request to her to do that, so-
Well, and so did, so did Dan, and so did Rose, and so-
We'll make it official if that goes up, though. The next, again, is another, I tend to admit, request of council member Conley, that council create committee to help the city with public libraries with their campaign, and name a council partner for that.
Yep, they have a bunch of money they need to raise. I attended the last library board meeting, and they're a good chunk in the way. I know that having, that having spoke to Donna Clark, having the backing of the city enables them to apply for grants under municipal and federal actions that they otherwise would not be able to do. So, I am hoping to be able to facilitate that. I'm, anybody as far as I know that wants to be a part of that is welcome, we're not trying to, it's just a mechanism to be able to work with them for that.
And I just talked to the city attorney, just, you know, he just cautioned that, you know, we can't use public funds and public resources.
No, no, no.
And I'm not suggesting you're going to do that, but that's something that we need to be always aware of, and it's getting informational and those kind of things.
Right.
Yep.
So, the idea is, if Donna needs to apply for a grant that needs city backing, here's a vehicle, I can bring that to you and say, here's a thing. We can do that. And we can work with other organizations to show the city's security moves, to, in hopes, help them get the rest of the way there.
The next is a discussion to create a fire barn relocation committee, in request by council member Tattler.
Well, if we're gonna give them a library, we gotta figure out what's happening with our fire barn. And I would like to work with Chief Fraser, obviously, and whoever Chief Fraser needs appropriate, and her baby, and I think he advocated Jeff Bust and Neil Larson, have some kids already. I know otherwise specific things, other than we just need to get this process moving so that we make sure, and, and even regardless of library, the fire barn we have doesn't meet our needs. It's not sufficient. So, even if we weren't building a new library, we really should be figuring out what to do about the fire barn. And we have folks willing to give us money, we should make this happen. It's a responsibility of the city to provide that in safety, so if I can be the chief that makes that for them, I can do that.
You know, if, if it's a pleasure, the council, what I could do is bring, at the next meeting, a suggested membership to that committee, for council's consideration.
I was, I was gonna leave it mostly up to Chief Fraser, 'cause I figure-
And, and Chief and I can work on that.
He knows what he needs.
Right. It's still, it's still gonna need formal approval by the council, so we would bring it back with, with direction for some confirmation. That sounds great. The next is a discussion to remove a planner in front of the theater as soon as possible, requested by council member Toll.
This chat was Len and other people on the theater board. The planner was put there, and his view as an error, and maybe to recreate it in a smaller version, remove it, hit some bids and discuss what's going on, if it's possible to do it. Basically, get started, get it on the table.
And I'm certainly not adverse to that. One thing that, as best as I can determine, that where it was placed was the place it was supposed to be, you know, based on the plans that we have, and I, you know, I know Len was on the DDA that time, and the only other one that we could find that was still around was Sonia, I think. And I talked with her today, and she doesn't recall it ever being discussed as being put in wrong, like, so, be that what it may, because I know there was some statements out there that it was the city made a mistake, you know, yeah.
Well, it really wasn't that the city did, it was the-
DDA.
The guy putting, the ones putting it in.
But, you can just look at it, from based on what we have, it's back where it's supposed to be. But, we did get a, just a shoddy dirty cost to revoke it, in its first request, which was just shy of $10,000. And then, he was also looking at changing the size of it, downsizing it, and that would be a little under $3,000 to do it. The issue that we have is that it's not, it's not budgeted to do. One of my suggestions would be, is it's been there for 18 years, if the council is interested in either downsizing or moving, we could fine-tune prices and then perhaps include it in our next fiscal year budget when we have one dedicated for it.
What's the obvious one?
Well, if I can speak on that, the reason why is, is error is an error way back, that the architect or designer, or whatever it was, at that time said that they had the authority to change whatever they want if it didn't fit their needs the way it was originally planned. So, that was how he said that was. But his point is, right now, since that street's all tore up there, he's like, move it out of the way of the tripping strand, pretty much. If you come out, straight out of the theater, if there's ever a fire or casualty in there, that's a blow in front of the entrance coming out.
That was my question, like-
Even if you chopped it in half, the direct view coming out of the theater is clear.
And, and to reduce the size of it has nothing, I mean, that can done really anytime, because it has no correlation to what we're doing on Cherry Street. Because the patrol, the patrol head will still be, remain in place, the back will, front will remain in place, we wouldn't move anything other than just basically cut the planner lengthwise.
Now, there's a lot more to that planner than people's, the wire in, posing it.
Is there any cost advantage to doing it now? While Cherry Street is tore up, as opposed to budgeting for this and putting it in the plan for later?
The only advantage would be as if it was completely removed for about $10,000. It would make it easier to do that now. But, now Len is talking about downsizing it, which will, about $3,000, just shy of $3,000, which has no impact on what we're doing at our Cherry Street.
Okay.
Nothing.
So, there may be an advantage if we were just gonna remove it, but if we're going to modify it, there's really no advantage to just doing it all?
No.
And the issue is, it's a tripping hazard.
That's, yeah, he perceives it as a tripping hazard.
He says that the time that they was putting it in, they were all under the opinion at city hall that the theater was never gonna be open, that it was eventually gonna be torn down, or whatever. So, it was not an obstacle to have that put there.
Got it.
That's Len's feedback on it. I wasn't around that today, so I was.
Well, we can all start talking about it, table it, keep it on the table for discussions in the future.
The next is, I, excuse me. Could I put my two cents worth in here? Actually, I would like to remove plonders like that every day of the week for $10,000. Dan and I will take it upon ourselves to do it, what, Dan? Tell me. We will, won't we, if we're doing it in a team? A lot more. That's the, the special on to video all city meetings that require city manager, our mayor, and require city clerk to eight minutes, as requested by council member Toll.
Okay, yeah, I'm just saying that. There's so many important things going on with our city and the libraries and the building and all this stuff. It's so nice to go back to these videos, the city council, and review them and get a handle on what was going on. It sure would be nice to be able to go to planning committee, DDA, what are other committees that are in here with Linda and you and the mayor?
That's, that's about it.
CCA?
Yeah, or maybe a few.
In my opinion, it'd be a great benefit to all of us who are, you know, sometimes just overwhelmed by all these facts and figures, if we could think about doing that in the future.
And they've been differences, just put it on the video. We're already keeping notes, scrap, so that-
I already took them, I'm sure.
Yeah, and said that's already heard.
The only difference that I can see is that there will have to be somebody who puts these up on YouTube, and I feel, I correct me if I'm wrong, 'cause I believe you're the man that does it, so you would know. Is that, is that a fairly simple process? Is it time, it is time-consuming? Okay, so you get an hour at a time, and you have to take this clip, so I don't know how long those meetings are.
We'd have to move this along, a couple meetings gonna start here very shortly.
Oh, very good.
Or when you take it, you know, get this through, take a five-minute, make the meeting the regular meeting.
Sure.
The next is a discussion to return the damaged red vinyl poster to the artist who gifted it to our city, Doris Benton, as requested by council member Toll.
Oh, it is real short. We've discussed this in the past. This was gifted to us by a local artist, Doris Benton, and it was damaged in storage. I don't know if we have to go down it, or just go by the opinion and consensus of council. She doesn't want displayed anymore because of the condition, but she did donate a new poster to us, and if we wanna accept it and hang it up again, and add its future, but in my opinion, we should return this to her and let her do what she thinks that is. So, that's the real thing.
And the next one would be a discussion to accept the replacement poster from Doris Crayton and hang it up at city hall, as requested by council member Toll.
So, that would be up to our council to future consideration. There would be some money involved, of course.
This is Vern. Safe to the time, I'll forego my management report at this time, and maybe I suggest we take a quick five-minute break before we can do the regular meeting.
I'll take care of it.
Put this in place.